I'd like to call the common council to order. First of all, if everyone would please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk conduct the roll call, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Alers Meyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Corn present.
I would entertain a motion to recess the common council for the purpose of a public hearing. Mrs. Williamson.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion. Carrie's. We will now have a public hearing on the appropriation of local option highway user tax funds. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address that particular ordinance? There being none, I will return to the common council and ask for a motion to reconvene. Mr. Heidi.
Make the motion to reconvene.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. You have received the minutes of the March 7th regular meeting. Are there any corrections? Excuse me. Will take a motion to approve those minutes as communicated.
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Heidi.
Second.
Any corrections on those minutes that anyone has found? There being none, then would the clerk conduct a roll call vote on the approval of the minutes of the March 7th meeting?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker? Oops, sorry. Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Minutes approved as communicated.
Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file in the city clerk's office.
Water Pollution Control Department monthly February, Water Works Department monthly February, and Fleet Maintenance monthly February.
Anybody that would like to examine those reports, they are on file in the clerk's office and they are free for your examination during business hours. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2016 dash 04. An ordinance amending section 2.01.020 of the Lafayette Municipal Code to change the time of regular common council meetings.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move that we here and approve ordinance 2016 dash 04 on second reading.
Mr. Downing?
Second.
Comments by members of the common council? Mr. Reynolds, we'll ask you for a wrap-up on this, please.
Yeah, just to bring in line with some of our regular times that we change it to 6:30 and it's a little earlier for everybody, I think.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Reynolds concerning this particular ordinance? Members of the audience wish to address this ordinance?
Good evening, Perry Barbie, 3700 Redbud Avenue. I just wondered, is this just going to be during the spring and summertime and then we'll get back to the fall schedule?
Uh, no, I think this is for the entire year. It's not like the daylight savings time we have within the city or the county and the state, which we maybe have three or four of those.
And if we don't see, this is to get more petition into the, from the citizens?
I think that would, I think that would probably be an ultimate goal.
And if we don't get, and if we don't see it in numbers in like in a year, are we looking back, changing them back or are we?
I think that the primary goal of this was to be a more consistent meeting time. It would be at 6:30. Our caucus is at 6:30, so I'm, that's what the goal is.
But if we don't see any changes from the general public coming in more, are we thinking about changing them back or have we had that topic? I know the idea is to have them all on the same page, which I'm, I think that's fine. I don't really have a problem. I just think we should wait until next year is my whole thing.
I don't know if that's one of the criteria, but if it is, we can evaluate that next January if we have to. Would that be agreeable, Mr. Reynolds?
I think so. I think, yeah, I think to just bring it in line with everybody else was the ideas.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea. I'm just, think we should've waited until next year, but I like Mr. Reynolds' idea. At least give it a chance to see how it works out. I just give you my food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Any other comments by members of the audience? Anything from the common council? There being none, would the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash 4?
Heidi?
Aye.
Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just for the members of the public, this ordinance takes effect immediately and will be in place next month, correct?
I thought it was tonight, but I think it's going to be.
Before we voted on?
Just to let them know that next month will be fixed.
Yes, it is. That's next month. That would be on, uh, don't have that. What's that?
May the 4th.
May the 4th. Thank you. Ordinance 2016 dash 5.
An ordinance for appropriation of a local option highway user tax funds, County Wheel Tax Fund number 249.
Any comments by members of, well, let's get on the floor.
Mr. President, I move that we pass ordinance 2016 dash 05 on second reading.
Mrs. Williamson?
Uh, second.
Thank you. Mayor?
President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, before you have the second reading on the ordinance that deals with the wheel tax that we collect here in the county that we use for road paving, as we stated in the past, and will state again for the public meeting tonight, we've always used the process. We have not put this money into the general budget process throughout the year, but done it as an additional appropriation, which gave the council and all the citizens the ability to see the list of roads that would actually be paved using that money and the funding dollars that we will have. We're a little bit, you know, a little bit closer, so we'll just continue with that process of transparency and we provided you with the, with the list and we'd appreciate your support on this and as the weather continues to improve, we'll get paving some of those roads.
Mayor, could you possibly get with the immediate folks so that that list could be published so that the public can see where the money will be going?
Sure. The only, the only caveat I would give to that, we're absolutely happy to do that. The only potential change, I just want to make clear, but we have some spare money. Sometimes when you begin to mill and dig up roads, you find additional problems in the sub base that has to be repaired and that takes some additional funds. So the exact miles, the whole roads, the exact lengths on some of those could change as conditions change as we begin to do some of that actual road work.
Thank you. Any questions of the mayor concerning the wheel tax, any appropriations? There being none, members of the public, do you have any questions or comments about the wheel tax and where the money will be spent or devoted to? There being no questions, once again, the council, nothing. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash 5?
Heidi?
Aye.
Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2016 dash 06. An order to amend the zoning ordinance of Vivigna County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to R-1, 2145 on 2209 O'Romney Rome, James and D. Dreen Landis Position.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2016 dash 06.
Thank you, Harnarji.
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Mrs. Charsnick, your name is on here.
This is a rezone for 0.77 acres to legitimize a longstanding non-conforming use. These are two single-family dwellings located in I-3 zone. However, it appears that the I-3 zoning was a color coding mistake at some point in time in the past with the hand-colored mats, so they have always been single-family homes and originally were appropriately zoned R-1, so this is correcting that non-conforming use.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Charsnick? Members of the audience wish to address this rezoning? There being no comments, once again, the common council, nothing. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash 6?
Heidi?
Aye.
Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2016 dash 06. An order to amend the zoning ordinance of Vivigna County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to R-1, 2145 on 2209 O'Romney Rome, James and D. Dreen Landis Position.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2016 dash 06.
Thank you, Harnarji.
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Mrs. Charsnick, your name is on here.
This is a rezone for 0.77 acres to legitimize a longstanding non-conforming use. These are two single-family dwellings located in I-3 zone. However, it appears that the I-3 zoning was a color coding mistake at some point in time in the past with the hand-colored mats, so they have always been single-family homes and originally were appropriately zoned R-1, so this is correcting that non-conforming use.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Charsnick? Members of the audience wish to address this rezoning? There being no comments, once again, the common council, nothing. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash 6?
Heidi?
Aye.
Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016 dash 7.
An order to amend section 7.06.990B4 regarding recovery of collection costs for unpaid parking violations.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Downing?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2016 dash 07. Second.
Very good. Comments by members of the common council? Yeah, I see, yeah, right. Mr. Harris, Kevin Harris, would you come forward and?
Basically, this ordinance, we have-
Who are you?
I'm sorry, Kevin Harris.
Good one.
I just want to jump right in.
Yeah, you do.
Harris, operations manager for the Parking and Operations Group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Basically, we have three types of parkers downtown. We have A, B, and C. We have A, they get a citation, they pay it, we never hear from them again. We have B, get lots of citations, most of the time they pay them and we don't hear much from them. And we have C, they get lots of citations, then they take off. They move, we never hear from them again. So this is in an effort to collect those fees using our collection agency. It takes time to send letters, process those, run license plates through the VMD, and this is a way we can use a third party to collect, add that, that cost on and collect those fees without incurring those to the city.
Is the return such that it's a benefit to use this collection agency?
Absolutely. Just in the last month, we collected $8,000 from fees we would've never received. We tried for a year and a half to collect those and through this third party, we were able to do that.
I see, good. So they will run somebody down if you've got the parking violations on them?
They will locate you, a professional.
Well, whichever is appropriate.
Track these folks down and do what the collection agency does best, yes. There are no pipe wrenches or baseball bats involved. Not currently.
Any other questions of Mr. Harris? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the audience? There being none, once again, the city council, any comments? Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash 7?
Heidi?
Aye.
Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Resolutions for first and final reading, number 2016 dash 6.
A resolution approving a deduction for tax abatement in an economic revitalization area, General Electric Company personal property tax abatement.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to hear and approve resolution 2016 dash 06.
Mr. Heidi?
Second.
Comments? Mayor, you're on the list here, it says.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Again, ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's a real privilege and we're very happy to be before you here tonight with this request for tax abatement for GE. As you know, GE has become a part of this community with their new LEAP engine assembly plant out in Park 350 here in Lafayette. We are just thrilled, as we all remember, when they chose Lafayette for that location. And tonight, we're able to talk about another part of that plant, but actually a different operation, and that's called the maintenance, repair, and overhaul. And that entails, and I'll let Eric Madison, who's here, is the plant leader from GE, to go into more detail. But basically, what it entails is that the warranty work and when these engines need work, all those engines will come back to Lafayette, Indiana, which is great for us. It's about $16 million in investment, about 30 new jobs of the people that will be doing that work, but it really gives our, our community an opportunity to market ourself in entirely different ways. There'll be a lot of people coming to the community, engines will be coming back from places that quite frankly, probably never heard about Lafayette, Indiana before, and so this is just a tremendous opportunity. And it's something we all had hoped when GE first announced that they would be coming here, that a company with the stature and the global reach of General Electric would be able to do things like this with our community that would help us continue to grow, help us promote our quality of life, our economic development that we have here in the community, and they have done just that. For those of you, I'm sure you've seen the building, it is a beautiful facility out there. They've done a tremendous job with the design of the building. We are just thrilled to have Eric as the plant leader here in the community. He has quickly become involved in many different things here, Lafayette, West Lafayette, and Tippecanoe County, and really become engaged. They're already becoming a very important corporate partner here in the greater Lafayette community, and so I certainly appreciate what they've done and I would appreciate this council's support on this resolution so we can get the next phase of work going out at GE. And with that, I would turn it over to Eric Madison, who is the plant leader here for the GE LEAP engine plant.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. I think he covered it all. So Eric Madison, I am the plant leader at the GE plant that's down in Park 350 and glad to be here. So we are growing. We're off to a really great start there at the facility. We went into operations in January of this year and we have now built modules that are flying, which is really fantastic with really great support from the city and everybody that's been involved in the project, it's been a true team effort. We'll be building and ramping and growing until we ship our first completed full engine this August, and all that leads into really a tremendous backlog. We've got a backlog now of over 10,200 engines, which takes us past 2022. And so we're excited to get these planes in the air and flying, and the opportunity that we bring now today is as these planes fly, these engines fly, they do need service. They do need maintenance, they do need repair from time to time, they do need overhaul, and so they need a place to go. When these engines fly away the first time, the customer's known them as a GE engine on an Airbus or on a Boeing aircraft or on a COMAC aircraft, and the customer takes and flies them. What's really fantastic, and the mayor alluded to this now, is wherever they are in the world, they're going to have to come back home to Lafayette, Indiana to get serviced. So there's a lot of global brands and global recognition, and that's why the importance of global awareness is so, so important with this kind of business. And so, so the engines will come back for repair and overhaul here in this area, and to support that, we're starting operations in the existing building today, and it will take about 30 additional people and about $15 million more equipment to do that. And with, you know, strong potential upside from there as the market continues to grow and grow and get more and more aircraft flying, we know the demand over the next 15 years is about 21,000 aircraft, and we're winning about 73% of that market.
What is the life expectancy of an engine in hours? I assume it's in hours or miles or something?
It's actually measured in cycles, so one flight is a cycle, and this engine is a 20,000 cycle engine before its significant first overhaul. So it does take about seven years to get there for the average aircraft, and the average aircraft will, you know, I'd say 20 years or so, depending on how they're flown, where they've been flown, how they've been treated, how they've been maintained and so forth.
Any questions? No, just one. How will they be bringing the engines in? By truck or?
They would come by truck, generally from O'Hare Airport, maybe from Atlanta. O'Hare gives, you know, aircraft are large enough to be able to fly these things in. What would happen generally is if an engine needs service, it's usually scheduled days to weeks in advance, and wherever that particular airline service center is, is where the engine's removed and a spare is put back on that evening, and then the engine will be flown back to this area here. Generally, they'd land in O'Hare and then we'd truck them down.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, please.
Any questions by members of the audience? There being none, once again, the council, any questions? Would the clerk conduct a roll call vote on resolution 2016 dash 6?
Heidi?
Aye.
Harnarji?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Reports of special committees. Reports by the mayor. Miscellaneous and new business, we have some department head reports. First of all, the street commissioner, Mr. Kroll.
Good evening. I won't tell how many times I was in your office.
Okay. Count my name.
Flyer.
We were on a first-name basis, if I remember.
I won't go there. Dan Kroll, street sanitation, fleet maintenance of facilities. I'd just like to talk tonight about what all these departments do around our city, and I've invited some of our folks here tonight, as you can see. I'll start off with our sanitation department. Last year, we ramped up our recycling program with a new distribution of 20,000 new trash toaters throughout the city. We couldn't have done this without the street department, waterworks, and water pollution control. All these people completed this task within a six-week period. That's pretty amazing. I'd also like to mention that at the end of 2015 last year, our recycling has saved taxpayers $192,000, so it's went up about $25,000 since last year. And we haven't even got to with the two-toater program, so hopefully at the end of this year, it'll really go up. Our fleet maintenance department works on over 1,000 pieces of equipment, from weed eaters to big loaders to fire trucks to big trucks, police cars, everything. We do this with just seven mechanics. If you ever visit our fleet maintenance department, it's a very busy place and we have some talented mechanics. A lot of them are here tonight. A few years ago, we moved facilities under the umbrella of street sanitation and fleet maintenance departments. We did this to save money. It was only supposed to be a temporary thing. But actually, it's been a good fit. Our facility department takes care of 20 city-owned buildings. We do this with just two talented maintenance men, and they're here tonight, too. These gentlemen do a great job looking after our city buildings. Now on to the street department. The reason these other departments can operate so well is because of the street department. On a daily basis, they do more than just pick up your brush and fix potholes. On a daily basis, I have to schedule one to four people in the sanitation to cover vacations, sick days, what have you. The same goes for fleet maintenance and facilities. I have some folks in the street department that are very talented mechanically, and we schedule them as needed to help out in these departments. It's truly amazing, all the things these people do. I'm very proud of them. Last December, we had meth lab training presented to us by the state police, and I'm happy to say, three weeks ago, one of our sanitation crews found a portable meth lab in the trash. They contacted the police and the fire department, and it was disposed of properly. One more thing about our sanitation crews. In January, one of our crews found one of our older citizens had fallen on the sidewalk, so they helped him up, got him back to his house, helped his wife call 911, and come to find out, he actually had a stroke, and they went back a few days later and he was okay. But they all do a great job, and I just want to thank them. And thank you. Do you have any questions?
I think we all owe them a great deal of thanks. And I think the gentlemen are here-
Sorry?
I think some of the gentlemen are here-
Oh, yeah. I gotta watch my back.
Represent that. Would you fellows stand up, please?
They all did a good stand-up, you guys.
Thank you very much. Dan Wimmin!
A leader is only as good as the people that work for him, and I'll tell you, we've got some great people that work for us.
That's excellent.
And there's continuity between our departments. I mean, we get help and we help each other. It's, we work so good.
Well, that's all a great deal of credit. We thank you for everything you do, gentlemen, and ladies. I'm sorry, I missed you there, young lady.
Mr. President, I think, I'd like to personally thank Dan on the new tote program because we've had nothing but compliments and from all the citizens of how well it's working. Yeah, they do a great job, and I think-
And I see with the growth of up to $192,000, that's a real plus. I think the next person to talk is Chief Doyle from the fire department.
Good evening, Chief Richard Doyle, Lafayette Fire Department. In 2015, the department made 12,035 service contacts in the city of Lafayette. 256 of those contacts were fire-related calls, 1,635 were non-fire-related calls, 5,515 were EMS-related calls, and 4,629 were building inspections. Each year, our run numbers continued to increase. There's been an increase of 1,364 emergency calls from 2012 to 2015. Fire-related runs have been reduced by 65, though. That's, that's because of our Fire Prevention Bureau that I'll talk about later. Non-fire-related responses have increased by 187. EMS responses have increased by 1,420, and our inspections have increased by 534. In 2015, the department promoted four firefighters, Jeff Hauser to lieutenant, Randy Evans to assistant chief of special operations, Toby Frost to captain, Robert McCord to lieutenant. The department also hired six new firefighters, Ben Bumgardner, Lee Booth, Grant Davidson, David Rose, Chris Smith, and Chris Carroll. Lafayette Fire Department maintains three special operations teams. Water rescue team that responds to any water rescue in the city of Lafayette and Tippecanoe County. A hazardous materials response team, they respond to any hazardous spill on roadways, industrial complexes, and can also respond to assist our neighboring communities. The technical rescue team responds to trench emergencies, high-angle rope rescue emergencies,[1720.71] As you all know, the volume of new construction in the area has continued to increase, putting more and more of a demand on our code enforcement personnel. They have done a great job keeping up with the city's growth, as we even see tonight with the GE expansion. The total number of inspections has increased by thirteen percent over two thousand fourteen totals, and a fifty-two percent increase over the two thousand and twelve totals. It's a, it's a, it's a great thing that we, our city is growing, but it does have effects on all the departments, and we're happy to, to increase our volume and work to participate in that. In two thousand fifteen, the Lafayette Fire Department I S, I S O rating improved from a three to a two. This is a significant improvement, considering that forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-four fire departments in the United States are evaluated, and only one thousand sixty departments have received a two classification. I S O evaluated, not only the fire department, but they also evaluate the water system in the city and the emergency communication system. The fire department receives fifty percent, the water department receives forty percent, and the emergency communication system receives ten percent of the evaluation. That means that not only do the citizens of Lafayette have a great fire department, but they also have a great water department and emergency communication system. This rating will have a direct cost savings on our citizens and the price of their, price of their home and business insurance. The hundred and forty-three firefighters that are on the job each day in Lafayette are some of the most dedicated and loyal people that I know. Each day, they respond to emergencies that may vary from simple to emergencies that will live with them forever, forever. Each one of these responses takes a toll on them physically, and more importantly, emotionally. In two thousand sixteen, the department will look at different ways that we can provide care to our personnel, so that those calls do not prevent them from finishing their career or creating problems at home. The calls that our personnel make are changing each day. What we did thirty years ago, maybe forty years ago, dramatically, has dramatically changed from what the personnel are doing today. The personnel of Lafayette Fire Department will continue to perform a very, at a very high level, and we're proud to serve the citizens of Lafayette. Any questions?
Very good, Chief. We thank you for all you do, and all your men and women do. One question, with the six additional firefighters, new firefighters, and one hundred and forty-three, is that your?
That's our budgeted number, the one hundred and forty-three. We, we were, we have five retiring this year, so we're, we barely stay level. We're generally several short of that one hundred and forty-three of our budgeted. We have another six or seven that are retiring next year. I currently have an additional six people in our recruit school today, as we speak. I think I, thinking about that, I think I missed something. Hold on a second.
Training inspection.
The training, let me read the training. Sorry, I went right by that. Our training division located just north of S I A continues to be one of the busiest places in the department, responsible for training all one hundred and forty-three firefighters with their required fire EMS and hazardous materials and leadership training. Each year, this division puts our new recruits through a sixteen-week recruit school. There are very few departments in the state who have the talent or time to have this type of training program, and that's not all that the division has on its plate. The Jefferson High School Fire and Rescue Academy is also located at the L F D Training Division. Over the past three years, some fifteen to twenty students get to live out their dreams of becoming a Lafayette firefighter. We have been ranked as one of the best academies in the state, ranking ourselves against other academies that have been in existence for twenty years or more. At a state competition that is held every year, the Lafayette students have scored first overall for the past two years, and are planning to repeat their success this April.
Any questions with the chief? Just one.
Yes.
The additional ones that the fire department is making, how are our trucks holding up?
Well, we're in a seven-year, we try to maintain them as best we can. Obviously, that's a testament to the fleet maintenance facility that we have. We have three E V T certified mechanics that work for the city. Again, that is something that most cities don't have, so we get the, the best maintenance on the apparatus that we have. It's about a twenty-year retirement, but we're in a process right now of a seven-year replacement program. We started three years ago, and we hope to replace an apparatus every year for seven years that will get us up to speed, so that we can do a purchase every other year. It's, it's very costly, obviously, to, to maintain a fire service. We, we take a good percentage of the city's budget every year, and so we try to be as frugal and efficient as we can. But about what we do, we, we, when we, we're, we're going to receive a new squad in about two weeks, at a cost of right around five hundred thousand dollars. We'll have that probably for about fifteen years before it goes into a reserve status, and so with a kind of end result of about twenty years on apparatus, so. And that's probably the national average for apparatus like that. They're bigger, we're making more and more runs, obviously, every year with that apparatus. We try to, to put, we move a new apparatus from a busy station to a slower station, then into reserve status, kind of the way we do that. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
What is your criteria for an emergency medical run?
We coordinate, we have, we coordinate with Tippecanoe Ambulance Service, and the, kind of the key thing that bumps it up to where we're going to respond with the EMS call is if they're having difficulty breathing, chest pain, or if it's a child's, young person's emergency. We work pretty closely with the county dispatch service and P's to have protocols, so that we're not making every run that the, that the ambulance service goes on. So those are some of the key words when our dispatch hears the call, when they get that call, if, if it's a, like I said, difficulty breathing, chest pains, those kind of kick us into the run with them.
Very good. Any other questions that people have? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Don't go too far away. Any questions by members of the audience concerning this? This is after the horses run out of the barn, but it would be nice if the clerk would send letters to all of these departments as they come up and provide this information to us, so that sometimes the men and women who are in the department are not present, but will note that the city council feels that they're doing a great job, and as I say, unfortunately, we've had some other reports already, but I think that these folks should be recognized.
I can do that.
Good deal, thank you. Here we come to public comment, well, reports of councilmen, any reports? There being none, we come to public comment, and I would caution members of the public that they make their comments positive and in, with good manners, and that they use three minutes, no more than three minutes, for those particular comments. So, given that, would you come forward if you have comments, and we'll go from there.
Lloyd Wells, thirty-seven seventeen, Rollings Drive. Promised you last month I'd be back. I want to thank Mr. Mayor for giving me a call the other day, and your explanation of your inability to provide any tax relief is reasonable, but in the future, it can be factored in ahead of the game, so that it becomes a part of the construction process, so that it doesn't mess up the budget or anything. I believe where there is a will, there is a way. So now let's talk about what we can do, not what we can't do. I think one of the things we can do is the city can provide or make available some low-interest loans, so these people can spread their losses over maybe ten years instead of the two or three. It's possible to do that. I don't want to hear that it's not. It is possible to do that. Some of the other things that can be done. Detour traffic kept away from Sagamore Parkway. Every time there's a hiccup on I sixty-five, Sagamore Parkway loads up. It shouldn't do that. We have Veterans Parkway that goes all the way around the city. You can run all that traffic around the city and bring it back out at twenty-five over here, and avoid this construction area. There's no reason under the sun that that can't be done. So it can take as long as an hour to get from, from the foul Chevrolet to twenty-six, when there is that kind of a backlog out there. So those kinds of things can be done, and it can improve the situation for these people. I'm sure there are other things that can be done as well to help these businesses out. It's utterly disgraceful to expect that these businesses carry the burden by themselves instead of the entire city making an effort to help them out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any other comments by members of the public?
Good evening, Mr. President, Dave Mecklenburg, councilman. I have a business on fifty-two bypasses. I want to talk about the communication between the city and the businesses in that, on that area where the construction is. Construction, I, I'm all for upgrading that, that parkway, but with the more we have different segments of that going on, we need to have better communication between the construction people, the city, or whoever it is, and the businesses. There are a lot of small businesses in that area that aren't going to make it. I had a guy tell me today, he's not going to make it. And remember, the small businesses in this town, if we don't have small businesses, you're not going to have big businesses. So small people got to be able to survive, too. So if there, any way we can increase the communication with, to us, I'm talking about the business owners, not the landlord. I, I leased my building, so I have, if you talk to the landlord, I, I don't know what's going on. And we're, we hear, everybody in the, and they're just hearing rumors of what's going on, and it's not fair to us. We don't know, if you drive down, if you try to get to my office tomorrow, good luck, because the road is so rough. I called twice, they, they come out, they grade it. It's so rough, it'll tear your car up. And I hate to see a farter truck have to go down there, because he'd be replaced with it the next day. It is that bad on that, on that, in that gravel that intersects those businesses. So if we could just have some more communication, because I'm going to tell you, as it moves on, I mean, it's going to be beautiful once done, and I'm, I'm all for it, but the communication's been lacking, and we, we really, a small businessman are really struggling with. It doesn't hurt my business, because I, my business, like, we, we provide a service, but the guy behind me, he really looks for people coming in his office, and he has to try to get people coming on Old Avenue, and cut through, and go over the curb and everything else, because they can't get there any other way. So if there's any way we could pass along to, to, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mecklenburg. I think that the gentleman that can do something about that was sitting very close to you there, so he can work on that communications function. Any other comments by members of the public? Mr. Heidi? I move to adjourn. All's in favor, second?
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.